Okay, Commissioner Zubor, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Hudek. Commissioner Green, Chairman Green.
Here.
And Commissioner Zubor's here, and we have Commissioner Perkins, Dodson, and O'Conne are not here.
Absent. And we have the planning staff represented by Jeff Goulet and Angela Willis-Ebbets. And all of you, welcome to our meeting tonight. We have a fairly light agenda, but before we get to that, we're going to talk about our November 20th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Support.
I got a motion by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zubor to approve the November 20th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have an agenda tonight consisting of, well, originally consisting of two items, two public hearings. I understand there's a late change to that. Jeff, could you explain that?
Yes, item two, that will be, public hearing will be reset for January the 8th. That was a ordinance amendment to Appendix A for the Cherry Hill Village overlay area. And then item number four, which is shown as a staff referral, that will also be setting a public hearing for January 8th. So both two and four should be moved to item five.
All right. Do I hear a motion to accept the amended agenda?
So moved.
Support. Got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel to move the agenda forward. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. As a result, we do invite the public to make comment if they so choose. We do ask that you fill out the form that is at the podium, because you will need to speak at the podium and speak into the microphone, because we do record these. Give your name and address, and then what you're wanting to say. So, tonight, we have the Canton, Michigan development rezoning, where we're considering a request to rezone the stated parcels, one from C-3 Regional Commercial to Light Industrial LI, and one from LI to C-3. And this property is located south of Michigan and east of Sheldon. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes. The, Mr. Jarboe is here to represent property he owns tonight. He's trying to rezone some parcels that currently have a mix of C-3 and LI zoning. So basically, this is a flip-flop of zoning. There's some parcels that have C-3 frontage on Michigan Avenue, as you can see on the map, and we've got some other parcels that are all LI. So he's looking at rezoning the frontage of Michigan Avenue to C-3 there to the west, and then the parcel to the east, since it attaches to the industrial property behind, that's going to be an industrial development. So they're requesting that the C-3 zoning, showing the cross-hatched marks, be rezoned to Light Industrial. So this is mixed-use area along Michigan Avenue. So the C-3 and LI zoning districts are both consistent. C-3 generally along Michigan Avenue, LI generally south of Michigan Avenue behind the commercial. I think Mr. Jarboe has a slight change to the zoning map. We can always zone less, we can't zone more. So Frank, if you need to adjust that, I was looking at the map, you're saying the amount of zoning you need to go from C-3 to LI is actually going to be less by taking off that little leg up near Michigan Avenue. So that would remain than LI, right?
Yes. So essentially, that would be where our curb cut, we planned, hopefully, to have a curb cut there.
It's probably not a big deal, that you would just have a parcel that maybe have its driveway zoned with split zoning or something, but the area here is where this jog is. I think you're looking at taking this straight up. So that would just be less zoning to LI, the rest of it would be, so this parcel then would be, continue to be C-3 then.
Exactly.
Correct. So we can adjust that before it goes to the Township Board. We can't grant a zoning for more than he requested, but we can grant a zoning for less than he requested. So we might as well go ahead and make that adjustment to the exhibit before it goes to the board for their first reading, if you feel that the rezoning is appropriate. But I think one of the properties was the old Garland Motel, is that correct? That was been torn down, and I think you have an RV storage behind there. So that's proposed for redevelopment. The parcel to the east is the Livonia Magnetics Building. That building is also proposed for reuse as a retail building, and so they're kind of reconfiguring those two sites to, so based on, to meet the needs of the future users. So both uses will be appropriate. I think when he comes back after zoning, one of the uses does require a special land use, and we'll go through that process at that time for, I think, proposed mini-storage in the south end of that property. That's still going to retain its LI zoning. Frank, do you have any other comments about the proposal?
Okay, before we get to that, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion to open the public hearing at 7:07 by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Frank Jarboe from Symmetry Management. This will probably mark our fourth development into the community. We're, we love the community, we love the, I mean, we've owned the Michigan Avenue site, the Garland Place Apartments. We're the ones that tore it down. We purchased it and tore it down. So it's been, it's been planned for redevelopment for a while, we've been trying to put this plan together, and unfortunately, the zoning got a little mixed up with what we planned, and just trying to get it rezoned so we can get it going.
Okay, all right, fair enough. I'm going to go to the audience and ask if there's any comments, questions, concerns, anything that anyone from the audience would like to give at this moment. Now's your chance. Nothing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing at 7:08 by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm going to go to the commission. I'm going to start down with Commissioner Zubor. What do you think about this?
I have no problem with it.
Okay, that's it? All right, Commissioner Engel?
I just got one basic question, Jeff. Going from C-3 to LI, what can we put in LI that we can't put in C-3?
C-3 is general commercial, LI would be, you know, Light Industrial Manufacturing, Storage, Warehousing, those kinds of uses.
And that's not acceptable in the C-3?
That's correct. C-3 would be generally office or commercial or retail, restaurants, those kinds of things. So he wants to use the existing industrial building, that Livonia Magnetics Building, and convert that to a commercial building, which is more appropriate on the frontage of Michigan Avenue. And then the site, which will retain LI zoning, where the Garland Place Motel was, essentially, the frontage will be the entrance to the mini-storage, most of the mini-storage or the industrial use will be in the south end of it. So the access will be off of Michigan Avenue. So they wanted the entire, you know, storage parcel to be zoned Light Industrial.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Thank you.
Oh, I just have one quick question, just for my edification. What is the strategy or purpose between partial rezoning of these properties, as opposed to just rezoning all? Since both of them fit in the mixed-use plan, why not just say, the whole property is C-3 or the whole property is LI?
Well, because they've, right now, because the properties have split zoning currently.
Okay.
These are long, deep parcels, so you can see how the line currently goes in and out. So you see the cross-tatch piece for LI to C-3, right now, that whole thing is zoned LI. So Livonia Magnetics had that entire building based on the site layout.
Right.
It's a little bit, you know, disjointed based on the way the sites will lay out, based on how they want to use them. So the, so the portion that's going to LI is just because that's the entrance to the industrial facility to the rear. We don't have a mixed-use zoning classification, so we have to look at how the property is being used and make sure the property has the right zoning for the proposed use. So that's one reason why the mixed-use along Michigan Avenue is good, because we have a combination of commercial-industrial zoning on the south side, and a lot of times, you know, you have uses that sit behind the commercial in the front, that need access out into Michigan Avenue.
Okay.
This allows that flexibility to happen, just like, you know, just like it currently is. It's just kind of almost flipping the zoning, you know, based on how they want to use the property.
All right, fair enough, fair enough.
Ideally, I mean, one thing we can look at in the future is if we want to develop a different zoning classification, which would provide for potential commercial and industrial uses, but we really haven't had a need to do that. But that's something we can look at to do in the future.
All right, I have no problem with that, since both of these are part of our mixed-use planning, you know, so I hope to see a really good project come out of this, and I have no problem with it. With that said...
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone all of parcel number 133020040010 and part of parcel 133020040011 from C-3 Regional Commercial District to LI Light Industrial District, and to rezone part of parcel number 13302004011 and the northern part of parcel number 13302004008 from Light Industrial to C-3 Regional Commercial District, as shown on the rezoning map. And do I need to mention that we amended it verbally?
Okay, well, and with the minor adjustment to the first part of that motion on parcel, we'll figure...
Ken?
Okay.
To eliminate a portion of the request of C-3 to LI-1.
What Jeff said.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on this?
Certainly. Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yeah.
Commissioner Zubor, yes? And Chairman Green?
Yes. The motion goes forward, and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frank, if you can get me an amended exhibit. Okay, thank you.
More morning, first name.
Okay, our next agenda item is a site plan for the Valvoline Lube Center. We're considering the site plan approval, which is the property is located north of Michigan Avenue and east of Beck Road. Angela, could you give us more detail?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item number three, now two, is site plan consideration for the Valvoline Quick Oil Change. If you recall earlier this year, you saw the special land use, and the layout of the plan is pretty much consistent with that concept that you saw before. The special land use was approved by the board at the July 25th, 2017 meeting. A cross-connection is going to be established with the Jimmy John's Shopping Center that is to the east there. In the cross-access agreement, will have to be submitted to the Engineering Department during detailed engineering review. The applicant was encouraged to design the building with an appearance similar to the Jimmy John's building next door. The building satisfies ordinance requirements for exterior materials. Actual material samples should be presented this evening for your review. Two modifications to the ordinance requirements are being requested by the project sponsor. The maximum number of parking spaces that would be permitted by the calculations in the zoning ordinance would be seven. They are showing 12 spaces in the parking lot, in addition to three internal to the building, and the parking calculation includes, accounts for internal parking spaces as well as those outside. They're requesting five additional spaces due to anticipated overlap of employees coming and going at their shift-change times. So you have a letter attached with your analysis, they are requesting the additional permission for additional five spaces. The following, the parking, I'm sorry, the parking lot landscaping is not required by ordinance for parking lots less than 15 spaces, but foundation plantings are needed. And due to the size of this parcel and the constraints on it with the creek next to it, they have requested the ability to locate some of the foundation landscaping in that green area right along the northwest property line there. They're requesting four shrubs and one ornamental tree be located there, and then the remainder will be in those front parking lot islands in front of the, directly in front of the We have some revisions that need to be made to the plans before the board sees them. The berm contour elevations have to be added to the site plan sheet. The dumpster wall detail specifies a six-foot wall when it needs to be eight feet. The owner's phone number must be added to the plan, and dimensioned light fixture detail needs to be included in the drawings for the entry light. If you recall, as we have gone down Michigan Avenue, we've attempted to get everyone to install lights that match at Toyota there and at Wendy's and Home Depot, and we're asking that they consider using those same fixtures at their entry as well. Staff recommends approval of the site plan conditioned upon those revisions being made to the drawings before the board considers it. And Mr. Alaba is here.
Thank you, Angela. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes.
I'm the property owner, and my name is Talal Balau, and my address is 22721 Cobb Street.
Welcome. Yeah, welcome. Did you have anything to add to what Angela has said?
No.
No, okay, all right, all right. Well, we're going to let the commission talk about it a minute, and if you can answer some questions, if there are any, then I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. I'm going to go down to the other end of the dais here.
Could your engineer bring brick samples or anything with him tonight? Okay. The planning commission would probably like to see those, if he's got them in his chair, if he can grab them and take them on up.
Yeah, go on, hold on.
I'm just handing them to you.
Okay.
Do you have the actual brick samples and the building material samples?
I think he does what he went to grab.
The sample board, okay.
Okay, all right, all right, go ahead.
Jeff, and Angela, actually, Angela, you had spoken about lighting. Does that include, are we lighting the entrance to the...
That's what the concern is. The ordinance requires entry lighting, decorative entry lighting on both sides of the driveway. That has not been shown on the drawings that you have before you, and we need to finalize that before you see it at the board level.
That will be bright enough for people coming off Michigan Avenue, because you're going 55 there, right?
Yes.
Burberry then, where the parking spots were, I was reading?
The shrubs are there in those parking lot islands, and then what won't fit there as, that meets the ordinance calculation, is right there.
That's in the, that's on Michigan Avenue between the parking space, that green space?
So that, where the, where the foundation plantings are being...
Those are in front of the building, right?
Right, those are the parking lot islands, yeah.
What doesn't fit there is going up along the drain here behind the building.
Parking spots behind the building also?
No, the landscape.
Foundation landscaping.
Landscaping. They don't have enough room to put it in front, so in order to meet the intent, sort of, of the ordinance of having this amount of plant material, we have in the past allowed them to locate it in other areas, if it's not possible to put it right adjacent to the building, and there's really no way. If you, if you put it next to the building, they can't drive around the building.
Or that was the issue. So even with the additional parking spaces, they can still get around the building then?
Right. Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Oh, no, I have several questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm fine. So the 12 parking spaces are the ones that are located in the front, right?
Yes.
I'm fine with the additional parking spaces.
And Commissioner Zubor?
I have no problems with it.
Okay. I have no problems with the, with the project as stated. I have a question in terms of the landscaping. Is the area between Michigan Avenue and the parking, is that flat or is it bermed to be bermed?
It's bermed.
It will be bermed standard height, four feet?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And is that going to be the same on the other side of the driveway as well?
If you see there, there's a little, smaller kind of berm area, because the sign is there and then the light poles.
Gotcha, okay.
So it'll fit in.
Because it'll flatten out where the sign is, and, okay.
Right.
I mean, the berm is intended to screen the fronts of the cars. So you only need a berm.
So you don't really need it that much on that side. Okay, all right.
Can you give them the material samples yet?
Yes, if we could see what material samples you have, that'd be great.
You got the brick?
It matches, is it supposed to match anything, or we're just looking at it to approve it, the look of it?
We're looking at it to see how closely it comes to the colored rendering you were given, because that's probably not along the lines of what you have in mind, so...
The rendering really doesn't show the color.
Rendering isn't usually, isn't necessarily true to what you're going to see in the field, and that's why we asked for material samples, so that you can see, like a manufacturer's...
Okay. This is just an actual brick, and I know this is what, like, more red, but this is kind of matching Jimmy John's.
Okay.
Very close to it, this is the color. And for the, for the wall pads, that's exactly, close to Jimmy John's, how they have it on the wall.
That's, that's going to go over each of the bays?
Yeah, whatever you see for wall pads, and we showed also on the photo, it's going to be on the sides, and in the front, and in the back.
Okay.
Same type from Jimmy John's. And the colors for the Ephes, the light bay, this is the light bay, and that's the brown at the top.
Okay.
So it's kind of...
So it's not that same color yellow we see on the rendering?
Well, it's, you know, it's really this color.
Is that the standard for the company, or is that something that you guys picked out?
No, this is something...
The owner picked out?
It's like a, it's a normal color. It's not a...
Standard colored.
It's a standard color, yes.
Also, or just this one?
No, this is also, we did, this is Jimmy John's, of course. We kind of tried to match as much as possible from Jimmy John's, and...
This, I'm confused, because you're talking about Ephes, but you've got a Soffit sample there?
No, this is not used at Ephes, but it's...
Yeah.
And that's the problem.
But, and I understand that, but, but you're showing us a Soffit sample on, in your hands?
The thing in your hand.
No, this is just color.
Just colors, okay.
This is color.
Just wanted to make sure I understood, okay.
No one here has a piece, it's a, you know, it's a foam piece, and they put this mash and all these things on, like, in front of them, that's...
The horizontal brickwork, the coursing, is that the same brick and it's just turned differently?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the color. They picked out.
Just throw it to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Greg.
I'll be sure and duck. How about your, the frame, frames, window and door frames, what will they be painted?
They're, 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 they're steel.
Are they dark bronze?
Color.
Dark bronze, yeah.
What color?
Match, to match the, the dark brown?
We're looking to see, like, maybe bluish color, you know, around the windows, around the doors.
Bluish?
Yes.
Why bluish?
Why blue?
Why not, why not match, why not match the dark brown that you have at the, at the top?
That's very possible, that's not a problem for us.
I mean, I don't know, the rest of the commission...
I would bet that Jimmy John's has bronze, you know, window...
Then it would be dark bronze.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody misses Jimmy John's, they can come to us, you know.
Yeah, you'll give them a sandwich.
Pass them then, by the way, it would all change.
Okay, I have, I have no further, oh, I do have one other concern. Okay, so those indicators at the top of the bays, those are, those are your light fixtures, right?
Well, it's, they're, they're actually, yes, that's the light fixtures.
Those are light, and, and the one that's to the right, that's not over a bay, what is that? Is that, that's a light also?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there's just some downward lighting on the outside?
Yeah, there is not just on one spot, over the door.
Okay. Is the, the height of your parapet high enough to shield your HVAC units from view?
Are you talking about the lights?
No, no, the, the top of the building, the parapet.
Oh, we did that. We, we made sure of that, I think Jeff mentioned, and Ms. Angela asked me for that. What we did for them, this is, see that four feet right here?
Right, that's your roof line?
And that four feet is our, you know, perfect cover, any rooftop.
Okay.
There's a rooftop in it, it's very small, like an inch, ton and a half, it's about this high.
Gotcha.
Because in the base, you don't provide...
Very little you need to heat and cool.
Okay, well, thank you very much for providing a use for that wedge piece of property, because I really couldn't see what could go there, but you, you found a use. Does the commission have any further comments? Yes?
I didn't know anyone in the audience was ready to speak to this, or to ask about something else.
Well, we can, we can ask, it's not a public hearing, but if, if anyone would like to speak on the project? There you have it.
Okay, always the politician.
I have a brick here, Don.
Yeah, really.
Oh, let me move back.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, make a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Valvoline Quick Oil Change, including modifications to permit, to permit location of one ornamental tree and four shrubs required as foundation landscaping to the open space area to the west of the building, and to permit five parking spaces in excess of that permitted by the ordinance. The recommendation is conditioned upon revision of the plans to include the following prior to consideration by the Board of Trustees. Label the berm contours on the site plan sheet with their proposed elevations. Add a dimensioned detail of the decorative entry light fixture to the drawings. Add the phone number of the owner to the plans. And revise the new dumpster wall detail to show the wall as eight feet high.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes? And Chairman Green?
Yes. And the next step for this project would be the trustees? Okay, all right.
Very good.
All right, thank you very much for that. We have some, well, what used to be a staff referral is now going to be a public hearing. The Uptown Apartments Amendment Number Five, and Summer Park rezoning 2019, Volk Music rezoning. Do I hear a motion to set the public hearing for January 8th on those three items?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel, and all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That's to make sure we get quorum on that. All right.
If you were here for public hearing, item number two, that's going to be rescheduled till January. There was a problem with the ad, we had to re-notice it, so...
This was to be...
What item were you here for?
Cherry Hill.
That was, it'll be rescheduled for January the 8th.
8th.
Yes.
January 8th.
January 8th.
We had to, we have to re-advertise it, so...
How come? No more?
Because we just found out last week, we had a problem with the ads, we have to re-notice it, so we didn't have time...
Things have to be done just right.
When the agendas went out, we realized a parcel number was incorrect on the advertisement, so we had to put a new ad in the paper, so you'll get a new notice, okay?
Yep.
the podium, please, and tell us who you are.
Hi, my name's Debbie Nolan, I live at 49528 Division, and my neighbor Celine said not everyone received a notice like we received for today's hearing, so we just want to make sure that everybody has something.
Jeff, could you address that?
Everybody within 300 feet of the property boundaries will get a notice.
300 feet, yep.
Okay.
And it, it's also advertised in the Township Wednesday?
Yeah, the townhouse. Yeah, why?
Depends on who's the current owner of record, so we'll have to, you'll have to call in and ask Connie to see whether or not you're on the list within 300 feet or not. That's the legal requirements for notification of a zoning change is 300 feet from the property boundary.
Okay, so, who do we call?
You can call our planning office and ask Connie, and just give them your name and address and see whether or not the address is on the list or not.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, thank you for your participation.
Essentially, what the change is, is to allow them to do condos on that site. Okay, right now, right now, the way it's zoned, they can only do so many units on that site because it's no longer part of the plan development. So, the zoning change is actually a change to the ordinance, it's not actually rezoning the property, but it's allowing them to do a little bit higher density as what was originally anticipated on the site, but the, but the owner of the property wants to do condominiums, townhouses on the site.
Cross street?
Hmm?
Like with the cross street on the other side?
Similar, yeah.
That's high.
We don't know exactly, it'll just be, it'll be residential. Okay.
Okay, one last item, it's not on the agenda and not on the record, and that was that I, I want to thank Sue Dotson officially. Sue Dotson is a Commissioner who was, was supposed to have her last meeting tonight,